United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It is December 9th, 2013. May I call please?
Clear.
There.
Mayor.
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 Mayor. We have a motion approval of two sets of minutes of the meetings of November 12th and November 18th. Silence made in a second. Any questions or discussion? Call. Yes.
Mayor.
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes. The village boards report.
And there's a copy of the tax income received since the last meeting of $24,647 for 10 months' tax. And it's written that everybody knew that dog tags are now on sale at least.
No, we still want to trial it?
All.
Will they still go to trial it or no?
$10 each and must be purchased by merchant.
Anyone from the audience wish to address the board? If not, the board reports to the village commission, certification, commission trustee.
We had our house walk on last Sunday, which was a success. We had approximately just under 200 people. Yesterday, we had our baskets and raffles at the breakfast with Santa, which also was a pretty good success.
Thank you. Fourth, July, commission trustee Coleman.
Yeah, nothing new to report this time, Mayor.
Thank you. You, the commission trustee, could move it.
Ice rink is up. It's about finished, so you can all expect to make some warm-up now.
Yeah. Thanks, Jennifer. Thank you.
Other than that, I have nothing to report.
I told you that.
I don't know.
Reverend, old commission trustee Billy.
Nothing to report. We have our next meeting. I believe it's the second meeting.
Thank you. Just take a moment in case the residents are watching tonight that we're filming this tonight in the new camera. So hopefully it's working better than the old one and everybody will be able to hear us and we'll go from there. Okay, we have a presentation tonight. Mike Hoffman, our village player on Tiff District, quite familiar.
I have put together a little PowerPoint presentation. I'm calling Tiff 101 to kind of give you a background on tax increment financing and how it's working in the state of Illinois, what some of the options are. A little report located from your, if me just plugging this spot or any microphone or anything.
You guys are right in front of the camera zooming front.
Okay.
You may want to turn your PC so you're on the other side. Maybe you can be, well, if you're just going to, you may just want to be on the other side of the desk.
Are we here? All right. How about that? Love that one. Okay, I'll just do it this way. And I'll turn my back to you guys. So look, here's the challenge. You know, you've got a community and you want to have a balanced tax base, right? You want, you know, you've got a wonderful residential community. You want to have a good industrial, commercial base to help support the community, balance out the tax base. And you've got some underperforming assets typically. You've got, in your case, downtown that, you know, probably is wonderful at one time, but it's not quite as wonderful as you'd like it to be right now. So, you know, you've got the desire to encourage economic development and you need some assistance in ways that you could partner with the development community to promote redevelopment of some areas of the community. Tax increment financing is one of the better tools that's out there. Communities and communities across the state have been using it for years. There's a lot of misperceptions of tax increment financing, mostly incurred to our favorite former mayor Daley. Chicago has used and used Tiffs for years and a lot of bad things. So if you've heard stories out of Chicago, don't pay a whole lot of attention to them because it's probably not very applicable to you. But everybody receives this great pot of money that's created by tax increment financing. And yes, it is a financial tool, but if used properly, correctly, it's fair to all parties and can work out very well. Tiff's not unique to Illinois. Forty-eight of the 50 states have tax increment financing provisions. Used to be 49, but one actually dropped it in California. It was the first one they created and has recently dropped in the last couple of years. But they're used all throughout the state of Illinois. It's been doing, gone on 34 years. There's 440 communities in the state that have tax increment financing districts. There's over 1,200 tax increment financing districts across the state of Illinois, large to small communities, urban to rural, really throughout the state. You will find tax increment financing districts. In your part of the world, I just looked at a quick research on this today. You can actually go to the state controllers website and look at the annual reports of Tiffs now, assuming they file them. But even if they haven't filed, you can see that they have a Tiff. So in your vicinity, Creed's got three Tiffs, Steger's got four. You can see the list down the line here, but a lot of neighboring communities have tax increment financing. Why is this important? It's important because you're competing with all those communities for economic development. When a business has almost located in the area or is looking for opportunities, they're going to look to you for incentives. It's just the way the business works these days. And so if you don't have those savings and those the other communities have, that is one strike against you in economic development, you know, I guess. So it is important to know what the competition is doing out there. In concept, tax increment financing works off of property tax values. Originally, when Tiff was created in the state of Illinois, they also included sales tax revenue in that, but the thought for 1980s, in 1980s, that sales tax was dropped. It was continued for Tiffs that were created before that date. But today, Tiff really only works off of property taxes. Now, there's another tool we can talk about called business districts, which does work off of sales tax, but Tiff as it itself is really working based off of property tax only. Really, it's a kind of an investment tool to harness the increase it's creating. When you redevelop a piece of property, the value of that property goes up, is assessed accordingly, and we're harnessing that increase in value. It is not a new tax. It's not a tax abatement. It's really just taking the tax, the property tax revenue, the increased property tax revenue off of new development and applying into the area to reform as a project area. In kind of graphic form, this is kind of what it looks like. Tiff districts are created typically for 23 years. That's what state statute allows. And every Tiff I ever started at has always started at the 23-year point. It's a time period. We establish a base equalized assessed value. So whatever the value of property that's out there right now, when you create the Tiff, that is your base level. All of the tax districts will continue to get the revenue they're getting now off of that base level, if you will. And then as new development happens and the property value increases in the area, we're going to use that increase times the tax rate to create an incremental value that we can then use to pay for public improvements, some of the land and the other things that are eligible under tax increment financing. So we'll use that kind of pot for the 23 years and fund projects. After the 23 years, that increased revenue and that increased base will then be going to all the taxing bodies once again and it can be a significant advantage for them at the end of that period. One of the primary things that you look for in tax increment financing is that really and truly you shouldn't create a tax increment financing district or provide any incentives if the development's going to happen on its own. I truly believe that and that's really one of the requirements to form a Tiff district is you need to have incentives in place to make something happen and to promote the economic development. So that's some of the basic parameters of tax increment financing. Tax increment financing to use to pay for a number of things. The state statute is very specific in terms of what it's going to be used for. There's actually about 15 things or so on the list, but these are the most common things that the Tiff is used upon. Public infrastructure for the road improvements, utilities, traffic signals, those kind of things are very often funded by tax increment districts. Environment cleanup, if you have brownfield sites or any kind of environmental problem, that is often paid for through Tiff. Property assembly is a very common Tiff expense. Often what you'll have in older areas of town is a lot of smaller parcels that are really too small to accommodate modern types of development. You need to assemble several of them together. Tiff is often used to assemble those pieces of the one large enough property to accommodate a new, certain type of development. Tiff can certainly be used for tax district capital costs. And there are actually formulas in the state statute for student compensation. So if you did residential projects within a Tiff, you would have to reimburse money to the school districts to help them accommodate those new students. What it can't do is it can't directly fund new private construction. Now, it can help pay for maintenance costs. It can also be used for a lot of rehab of buildings. So the side improvements, even interior remodeling, those things can all be funded through Tiff, but not new bricks and mortar essentially, except for the financing piece, which a little bit can be funded through Tiff. There are basically two ways the communities use Tiff as a finance tool. First is to borrow money. They will go out, issue bonds. Tiff represents typically backed by general obligation of the community and use that to pay for infrastructure or some of the land of the things I just talked about a second ago. Certainly gets you up and going faster, but is also certainly at greater risk to do that. What we typically recommend to communities, and which more of them are going with these days, is the kind of the pay-as-you-go approach. You start out a little bit slower. You build up money in the account. Yes, you enter development agreements, but essentially the risk is on the developer. So if the developer builds this project, it performs the way it's supposed to, you reimburse him for those Tiff eligible costs as his project essentially pays for it. So you're paying as you're going along under the bonding approach, the borrowing approach upfront. If the project goes belly up, you might have to find another source of money to pay for that. Now, borrowing's not always bad. If you've got a project that's a pretty guaranteed deal and you're positive of it, then in an issue of bonds, it might make sense in a particular case, but typically we recommend a conservative approach of putting the risk almost all on the developer, the pay-as-you-go approach. Tiffs, there are, in state statute, there are a number of different tax increment financing districts that are allowed. There are intermodal Tiffs, Tiffs that are formed because the area is blighted, Tiffs because an area is a conservation area, which essentially says, if you don't do something, it's going to become blighted. It's moving in that direction. And there are industrial park conservation area Tiffs as well. First one is pretty simple, intermodal. If everybody's familiar with intermodal operations, you've ever been out to Elwood or you've heard about the proposal in Creed or some of the other ones, where you're taking goods from rail and putting them on trucks or vice versa, or shipping and those kind of things. The eligible criteria for that is pretty simple. It's an intermodal facility, it's eligible to create a Tiff. Okay, that's all there is to it. Industrial park conservation areas is another type of Tiff, and I'll come to the other ones in a second. But basically, there are two criteria for that. The area must be a community, it must be zoned industrial, and it must be a labor surplus community. What that essentially means is that your unemployment rate locally is higher than the national average, and it has to be higher than 6%. Okay? Which that probably exists, if the national rate is about 7% and I think it's closer to, let's see, this is suggesting over 8% in the local town. So that is in place right now. The other thing you have to do with industrial park conservation area is you have to have part of it that needs to be the blighted conservation sand. I'll put those next. Most Tiffs that aren't industrial qualify under these factors, either blighted or a conservation. The conservation area is a situation where you've got age is one of your main criteria. Age essentially is that over half of the buildings in the area are over 35 years in age or not hard to prove in an older area of town for sure. If that is the case, then you need to meet three of, you need about 13 other criteria that are outlined in statute. The most common of which are the ones that I've listed out here. Obsolescence, meaning, you know, for example, if it was an industrial building, you might have 12-foot ceilings and they want much higher ceilings. These days, they're counting modern industrial development. Or buildings are just laid out in an unusual way, or there's not adequate space in the site for parking. It's essentially obsolete for modern types of uses. Deterioration of building and service improvements, pretty self-explanatory, but, you know, if the parking lot's falling apart or the roof is in bad condition, those kind of things, it's clearly deteriorated. I think so's line coverage. Lack of community planning, declining EAD, that's very common, the last one there. And then, you know, if you're creating a Tiff in a blighted or a challenged part of the community, odds are it's the equalized assessed value is not being growing as fast as the rest of the community. If you improve that, that's another factor that you can have to qualify an area to Tiff. There are probably number six other criteria, but these are the most common ones that you would use to create a Tiff. Essentially, what you would do is do a study and look at each individual property, make sure that, one, those factors are present, two, that they're reasonably well distributed throughout the area, and three, document all that. So if you have a challenge, you've got to get a record of it. Typically, communities will hire a consultant, like the Tuscan Associates or some other firm, to do an eligibility study for them so that essentially you've got some cover. You can say, well, these professional consultants that do this on a regular basis went out and studied this area and in fact, they determined it is eligible. The other piece of the pie in terms of creating a Tiff is a redevelopment plan. A redevelopment plan, in addition to describing the area, summarizes the eligibility, talks about the goals and objectives for redevelopment in the area, has a future land use plan in it typically, and it should really be consistently comprehensive plan. It talks about what we're going to use funds for in the Tiff district. Honestly, that's almost the same area of Tiff I've looked at because most of the time you just list out the stuff the statute allows you to do. Because you're creating a plan for 23 years and things will change. So you want to make sure that you allow to do pretty much everything you can in here. You've got to have an estimated project cost and budget in here. That is very itemized and customized for each community depending on what your priorities are and frankly, what we think we can get in potential Tiff revenue out of the area. We look at the development potential of properties. We project up what the equalized assessed value is off of base unpreparable properties in the community and give you a projection of what we think the maximum revenue would be in the area and use that to create a budget. That is always a maximum budget. It's by no means a saying we're going to spend this amount of money. It's just kind of a maximum cap that we have to establish if we're creating a Tiff district. We also have to talk about what we're going to do with a bond or how we're going to approach it. What we have, we need to really document that if we don't create this incentive, development's not going to happen. And then we need to talk about the impact on other taxing bodies. So that eligibility study and the redevelopment plan are the key parts of creating a Tiff. State statute outlines a very detailed option process to create a Tiff. There's ordinances that have to be approved. We have to publish a public hearing, start to conduct a junk review board, which is a meeting of all the different taxing bodies where they basically say they agree that the area is eligible or if they don't agree that the other area is eligible. If they don't agree, they need to explain why. And we still have an opportunity to come back and discuss that with them. We have to hold a public hearing and we have to adopt a series of ordinances. Typically, this takes in the range of four to six months, and I would say that is completely doable if you've done some homework upfront and have let folks know and given them a heads up this is coming up. I have been involved in situations, particularly, our firm's been involved in situations where it's taken them up to a year to create a Tiff because they didn't talk to the school district because they fired us because someone upfront and they've had some controversial things going on and they took a lot of work through those things. So by statute, it takes about four months at the quickest, but considering quarters six is more typical and can be longer if you get into a controversial situation. Once you create a Tiff, there are things that you need to handle throughout the process. People often ask who controls the money in the Tiff? Is it the junk review board? No, it's the village board. It's really your say in terms of how the money is spent. You are the ones that will be entering into development agreements with property owners or with developers, and so you really control how this thing operates and runs. You will have to do annual audits and prepare an annual report to say how you've spent the money, how you plan to spend any money in the Tiff, and what projects you've entered in, what agreements you've entered in the Tiff over the course of the last year. You also have to handle annual junk review boards, meetings where the taxing bodies can come in, review what's been going on and ask questions essentially. Couple of other important things, maybe we'll probably enter development agreements. The prevailing wage thing does apply there, just so you know that. If you do funding public works projects out of a Tiff, you're going to have to pay prevailing wages, just to make sure you know that upfront and you're all right. There is a seven-year sunset. If we create a Tiff and nothing's happened in seven years and we have a funding, we develop the projects, we develop the activities, the Tiff by statute is supposed to be ended right there. It doesn't happen often, but it can happen. And another important thing to keep in mind is there is provision in statute where if we have a successful Tiff and we're doing well and we start building up a surplus of money, surplus amount of revenue in the Tiff, we need to distribute that to the other taxing bodies, all based upon their current tax rates. We can't just give to the school district or the whole fire district or the village and want to distribute it equally. The state statute is pretty clear on how that works. Believe it or not, that does happen. We've done some work in, for years, in O'Conne Morris and Morris standard, distributing some money out of their Tiff district to the taxing bodies and that more got pretty nicely for everyone involved. The nice thing about a surplus distribution is that unlike most things under Tiff that have to be specifically outlined in statute in terms of what you can spend money on, it's declared a surplus that can be used for anything that the taxing body typically spent on. So rather than, you know, for schools, typically if it's Tiff money, it would have to be just capital improvements, but if it's a surplus distribution, it could be for teacher salaries or anything else that they had to spend money on. Little guy in the clock said, I'd remind you to highlight for you that. You want to be careful about when you establish a Tiff. 23 years sounds like a long period of time, but I've been involved in some communities where, I was on the plan commission in Mount Prospect for a number of years and I had a Tiff in a downtown area. And I wasn't really actively involved until maybe year 10 or 12 in Tiff. And so we had another 12 years or so left, not a lot happened. There was some money in the Tiff, but we really need to keep going and jumpstart that thing because when we started entering development agreements and try to cash flow out projects, 10 years starts to be kind of a short period of time to do that. So all that is being said is that you want to have some idea that something will be happening in the next year or two before you start establishing a Tiff. You don't want to do it too early. You have to time it right based upon the market, the economy, and when defensive it all might be going on. Impact on taxing bodies always comes up as an issue. My opinion really is that, you know, if the project is really going to need that butt for its asset, if development's not going to happen, if we don't provide some type of incentive, and I hope it can't exonerate, if development would happen on its own, then it's huge impact. Simple as that. But I know that there obviously is some spin-off benefits for development. The economy is typically stronger if development's going on, and that's certainly a positive and, you know, probably property values outside the Tiff may well be going up as well. So taxing bodies can benefit by that. They all certainly benefit when the Tiff is closed and you've got the higher assessed value out there and you certainly can fund some capital costs and other things for entities within, that have property within the Tiff district itself, a school or a fire district or fire stations improvement that you can certainly pay for some improvements to their facilities that needed and spurred on by the Tiff itself. Some have tips and tricks here. First one is very, very important, particularly in smaller communities. You need to make sure that you're avoiding conflicts and interests. That means if you own property within the Tiff in the city on the village board, you need to excuse yourself from any conversation, discussion, certainly angles having to do with Tiff. So if you start to create one here and be sure, we want to be careful with that here where I've come back to, I've been in a couple of communities where we started to do a Tiff process and then I found out that, you know, two of the council people own property in the area we're talking about in Tiff, and without those two people voting positively, the Tiff wasn't going to happen and it got stalled halfway through. So that's something to think about upfront in the process. A lot of the communities you saw on that list earlier have multiple tax increment financing districts. You are able through statute to transfer money from one Tiff district to another Tiff district if they touch. Okay? Not a big deal now, which you have to go ahead and use that districts, but something to keep in mind in a later date. And it relates to that timing issue that I was talking about a minute ago. You may not want to create a huge Tiff right off the bat. You might want to create a smaller one here in this area today where you think things are going to happen now and then attach one to it later and that will allow you to have a longer timeframe to be able to have those incentives in place and still be able to share money between the two different areas. So important feature of tax increment financing. We talked about credit construction costs already. Do your homework. If you decide that you want to pursue a Tiff, and I was talking about a second ago about this, fund the taxing bodies early and let them know that this is coming up. There will be a lot of misinformation probably that will happen if you decide to pursue a Tiff. Let's try to spearhead that and cut a lot of that off as early as we can and make sure that everyone really understands that they may not all agree with us, but at least we want to make sure that everybody's got the right facts because if you get rumors out there about things that really aren't true, it's harder and harder to refute those the more they're heard. So we want to kind of get out ahead of that as much as possible. Doesn't have to be a big thing, we can resume. You do formally statements to the board. Mayor can go sit down with their president and chat with them. It doesn't really matter how it gets done, it just needs to get done, communicated kind of upfront. Sometimes taxing bodies will ask you for things that, everything I've heard, are not believable. They ask for things like make whole agreements and those kind of things for one taxing body and not the others. Really, all taxing bodies shouldn't be treated equal for surplus revenue in a district to all of them. And finally, timeframe. I said 23 years. Often when you're creating a Tiff, taxing bodies ask me, can it be shorter than that? Yes, it could be shorter than that. My recommendation is to establish it upfront at the maximum of 23 years. And if you've done the projects you want to in 15, then you end it in 15. Yes, that does happen. I've worked in a couple of communities where that has happened. That's just an example of that. But I would establish it for that whole period of time. And yes, you do hear about Tiffs that are extended too. They can be up to the total of 35 years, another 12 years on top of this 23. That requires action by the state legislature though and by their unwritten policies, the game of all the different taxing bodies to do that. So 23 years is the typical limit, but it can be extended through state legislation. So let me just show you real quick a couple of examples of Tiffs. I gave a talk last year at the Vernon County Growth Conference and we were talking about Tiff success stories. And so a couple of the sites are difficult, so I'll go through them really quickly, but I think it may be of interest is to see some examples of different Tiffs and how communities have used them across the state. Sorry. I'm going to skip over these. And gee, I talked about that already, but so let's get into some examples. Downtown Plainfield, Illinois has Tiff. This is my office. This is basically taken from my office. But you look at this, to this same picture 10 years ago, it wouldn't have looked near this good. They use Tiff to fund the streetscape, they use Tiff to provide the side grants to a lot of those buildings. We have an interior of a lot of the properties and it has really helped to fuel and fund kind of a rejuvenation of the downtown area. Here's some facts and figures of that and how it's worked. It was created back in 1988. It's generating about $550,000 a year now in the downtown area. There really hasn't been a lot of new development, there's just been a lot of rehab. Now, rehab doesn't typically produce a lot of revenue. However, in this case, you're in a community that has grown by leaps and bounds over the last 15 years, which has been a lot of overall property inflation, if you will. Really, it's kind of been captured by the Tiff. There's been some new development, but to date it has been very successful and really has approved a lot and feel of the downtown area. Essentially, the downtown has two pieces of it. The kind of right-hand side there is the older part of the downtown and the area to the left is what they're calling the new downtown. And that new area does have a number of new buildings that have created significant taxing benefits that can use to help fuel some of the side things and other things downtown that we saw in the picture a second ago. Little Springs is another community where we helped them do a tax increment financing district. This was in the area adjacent to their metro station. This is a case where I think they got the planning right. They developed overall plans for the area. We did a comprehensive plan and an overall redevelopment plan. I decided what the vision was for the area first, then we decided, okay, we need some financial tool to help with that. Then we went and created the Tiff district, did some zoning amendments for the area, entered development agreements, and in fact, a lot of development has happened in the area. Now, some of it came on in time that the market was really in bad shape, so it's taken a little bit longer for some of the development to happen, but in their case, they created a new village hall in the area. They had some very successful townhome developments. They had some mixed-use developments that have grown for commercial space, upper story, condominiums, apartments. And they really created a simple place in the community that didn't exist previously. Used for all kinds of events and festivals and activities. It really is kind of a downtown part of the community now that didn't previously exist. There's some numbers that go along with it. In their case, through negotiation with the school district, they created a deal of 547,000 would go to the school district. It is not my recommendation for you to do that necessarily, but sometimes politically you do what you got to do. So that was done in that case. This one was a situation where they did go out and issue bonds. This one was a situation where they did go out and issue bonds, and honestly, there was a period of time where they were a little worried about that, because the economy wasn't doing well and the kind of units weren't selling very well, and it has since picked up and they're, they're going to be fine in this particular case, but it was a concern for a period of time because they did go out, issue some significant bonds for the project. Canton, Illinois, another client of ours, we did a couple of land, these streetscape work for them, they had a TIF downtown, were able to attract a new major medical facility in the downtown area, Cook Medical, it's kind of a home downtown guy that had his business established in Indianapolis, decided to move a branch of his company back to Canton, that's adjacent to the downtown area, they've used that to fuel facade rehab in the downtown area as well as the new industrial development next to it, used that to kind of leverage to get some high tech grants, the streetscape work, and it has worked out very, very well for some of the facades. Downtown Canton, that top picture is the equipment building headquarters, bottom's just one I put in there for a landscape architectural work, we're doing the downtown plan. I looked at this JCPenney's building, it was this completely blank white block wall, and that was it, and it was like right in the east side of downtown, so the channels and specia and murals, and I think it was funded through the TIF, but really kind of, still not great, but it's much better than what, in terms of the side of that building. The downtown needed a relook at the circulation area, it goes off one corner, it is basically square, but they had one corner that was cut off from traffic, and it was really great and some significant circulation problems, they used TIF to help fix that problem. TIF doesn't always work the way people think it's going to upfront. This is a situation in a community in the northwest suburbs that we didn't create a TIF, but we kind of all went and kind of said, okay, we've got a big problem here, how do we fix this? It was a downtown community, I'm not going to name them, but if you know the area, I'll tell you privately who it was, but they had a very grand vision for redevelopment in the area with lots of things happening, they were actually on a lake, and you know, this was kind of their vision for the area. They got started and had some successful development, again, they came on the market at the wrong time though, and they went out and they bought a lot of land and issued a lot of bonds, and they have a huge hole right now, and are very likely to have to build back, my general obligation of the overall community to get themselves out of the hole if they're in, so, that's why I promote the TIF. So, kind of approach. We'll put wrapping up, there are other tools out there, there are business districts, business districts are a tool that's allowed by the state that essentially allows you to capture revenue from sales tax or revenue from hotel motel taxes. It operates pretty similar to TIF, you need to prove the area is a conservation area or lighted, and you can use it for similar things with the TIF, but the source of revenue is slightly different. Other taxing bodies generally like that, because it doesn't impact the property tax base at all, probably that should need some kind of use that's going to generate significant sales tax, so, it works if you're putting in a Walmart, they're probably done, or in a downtown area where you don't generate much sales tax, but if you need it. There's certainly special service areas that you can create, you can create additional tax in an area if you need to, through, often used for a new sewer line or something very specific in that regard. There are enterprise zones, there's a whole sucker presentation I've been getting into today, and I've worked at some incentives, this was out of the presentation, I recognize that was relevant there, but that is my quick, I did a half hour, coverage of taxing from financing districts, so, questions?
I have a few, brother.
Okay, let's go. If I understand it correctly, this issue was the downtown area, with a quiet TIF for facade, for a tight, a quiet TIF for the infrastructure zone and so forth. Bottom line is if we put the money into it, we create a TIF, and property values do not increase, or they don't do anything with their own properties or whatever the case may be, property values do not go up, basically, we'd like to go, and we don't get paid back.
If you spend money, yes, if you wait for the money to pay as you go, then you don't spend it before you got it.
Stay with the pay as you go.
Yeah.
So, how do you have a facade here, and you have to, that money, the thing is, to get, here's the problem with the idea of pay as you go, sooner or later, the money's got to be there for them to be able, because it goes back to, well, why are you doing a TIF if it was going to develop anyway? So, if it was going to develop anyways, then TIF does nothing for you. So, if you pay as you go, I'm not, I the property owner, I'm not going to invest into this because I don't see anything coming, so, this TIF does nothing for me, because there's nothing coming back. So, if you pay as you go, sooner or later, somebody has to do that initial investment. The village would have to do the initial investment to get the ball rolling, if the idea is that it would never come. If it was going to come, there's no reason to do a TIF. So, how does pay as you go start? You have to start it somewhere.
Yeah, a couple things. Typically, the ideal thing is that you've got a situation where you know, or you have a development that wants to happen, wants incentives to make it happen, that comes in early on in the process, and so, not in year one, the village is never going to have any revenue in year one, because it takes a while to build some money up there, but if you get developments to happen early in the area, in two or three years, you can start having enough money built up to do some significant projects, and so, an early project upfront certainly will happen and be helpful. When you create the boundaries of the area, I would highly recommend that you create the boundaries in such a way that you include some property that's essentially raw land, because like I talked about earlier, when you rehab a project, you don't generate a lot of revenue, it's really the construction that you need, so, if you want to do a TIF in the downtown area, you might well have to reach out the Dixie Highway, or industrial area, or something else to get some raw land, to create enough increment to be able to do something significant. It's very common in TIF for not a lot to happen the first two or three years in the TIF, until you start building up some money, you're going to go pay as you go around, so, if you talk to facade rehab programs, when you're talking to people, make them aware that it's going to be three, four years or something like that out, before we could have enough money to be able to start funding some facade programs, unless the community is willing to put in money of their own upfront, which certainly could spur experience in development.
Okay, so again, the key is not so much what's there now, is the vacant land to bring something in, let's say, whatever it would be, like a doctor's center, let's say for instance, not a piece of property, that's going to spur the money to fix whatever's wrong.
Exactly.
Okay, one other scenario then, and I'm going to bring up both, which is what are coming to our minds, is these water mains down Penfield to Main Street. Okay, number one, I think a TIF would apply correct to the TIF structure.
Absolutely.
Okay, it's residential area, and once again, if the economy stays the same and property values don't go up, same rule would apply, you would have to include something like, let's say somewhere along Route One, where by the gas station and, and, our general, would come in, you would include something like that area there to spark the increased money that it would pay off against the water mains.
Absolutely, and just so you, to be clear also on things like water main and infrastructure things, they don't necessarily have to be in the TIF to be funded by the TIF, they need to serve the TIF, okay? So, if you've got a line from point A to point B, and that space in between there is not in the TIF, but that line is needed to serve the area over here that is in the TIF, then you can still pay for that line, even if it's outside the corner of the TIF, as long as serving property is in the TIF.
Define serving.
Providing water to it, the Hays and Oiler line, I mean, that's.
I think that's very interesting, what you're saying. What do you mean by serving, say that again?
Yeah, let's say that that little ring there in the circle is the properties of our TIF district, and we've got water access over here, but we have to build a water line from here to here to be able to provide water service to the area inside there. We can pay for that lines outside the ring of that TIF, because it is required to serve this area.
Okay, thanks.
So, you can't repair all your water mains with the TIF money, because all your water mains aren't a direct connection to where you're going. I've got a question, you keep saying you can go to the downtown area and then go up to Route One, does the property need to be contiguous?
Absolutely, it does.
So, then you would need to go from the downtown area all the way up Penfield and into Route One?
Or like going back to the nasty order of the intermodal years ago, that's what we did, do the downtown area, we went north into vacant land where the intermodal was going to be, so, losing that concept if the intermodal was built and it was prosperous, then that money would have been used to pay for the downtown area.
Yeah, that was an intermodal TIF, which we couldn't have included the downtown area yet, to be able to separate it. No, it's an intermodal TIF, which is totally different, intermodal TIFs don't require any criteria, it's an intermodal yard, you can't combine other uses with the intermodal yard.
The, the, the reason how we were reaching downtown was if you went with an intermodal TIF, you needed to be able, the worry was blocking off the downtown area, so building a bridge underneath the railway would be allowed to be used with the intermodal TIF because it's an impact on the area. So, if you would take Miller, where it doesn't go across, and you put an underpass in there, the intermodal would pay for that because it's going to block off the downtown access across the building, and that's really where they, when you're looking at that, that's what it was going to.
I doubt if you can use intermodal TIF funds beside the, the downtown. Intermodal district, the way we had it set up by state law, is for the intermodal use. You can't, you'd have to have, probably have to have a separate district, what we were talking about, is an area at the south of Church Room into our downtown area, which would include the school districts probably, because that's how we were going to get them to buy into it, because the school district, your own property in the TIF district, it could benefit directly from the TIF district.
So, that TIF district didn't depend upon the intermodal or?
No, it was two separate districts.
Then I missed some questions.
Yeah, the intermodal TIF district was from the intermodal yard north of Church Room.
We were, we were going to go down the tracks to go into Miller.
Yes, it'd probably have been two separate districts, so, because I don't believe an intermodal TIF could put you in downtown.
It would mean, no, the TIF we were looking at wasn't going into the downtown area, it was to be able to get access under Miller, because if you did have an intermodal in the area, you would block every access.
Okay, just trying to get the concept out, because that's in the past, but you know, for, anybody else have any questions?
You can hamper residential in the TIF district?
Yes, you can.
So, the guy who wanted to build four-story buildings with the first floor being commercial and next three being residential, that's.
Those are TIFs, so, we should back on those kind of projects.
Yes. The twenty-three criteria that you have to meet, that we use twenty-three criteria for those kind of TIFs, you think we would need those?
If it's around thirteen, you would only need to meet three to five of those, depending on whether you're a bloated or a conservation area.
Do you feel so are downtown?
Yes.
Easily?
Yes.
Can taxing bodies own property in TIFs?
Absolutely.
Can they benefit from the use of those two funds?
Yes.
Does any other owner?
Yes.
Anyone else? Do the property owners have to agree to the TIF?
No.
Even though they're going to be in the TIF district?
That's correct.
Yeah, it wouldn't affect them.
Well, it would, it would, it would, if your plan was to modify what they're doing. Right now, you have a lot of property owners that are, that are in the old downtown area that disagree in the direction they want to pursue. I mean, it's, it's apparent, people have their own opinion of what they want to see as the downtown. The property owners, if they're not buying into where you're going, creating a TIF in their area to help them is not to their advantage if they don't want to invest in that building. Because you as a village cannot modify their building.
No, 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 but.
I think the first idea is to have a plan to present to them, and then go from there, and that's something that has never been done yet, and someone had have always said, what is our plan? You don't know what our plan is yet, and this is the first step probably, is see if we can finance a plan, whatever it may be. I don't think we amongst us four even know what we want yet, because we haven't really sat down in detail and discussed.
You have, you have one over one major hurdle, and that is in your strategic planning. All of you by consensus said, we don't have to preserve the existing buildings downtown. That is a huge paradigm shift as far as I can see.
I was just going to say that that's the first time that that has been heard, at least in the six years that we've been around, they probably agree and gale and this kind of.
I mean, I was always, I always had the mindset that we had to reserve what we get, but when I heard that strategic planning sessions, you guys said, look, it's maybe too late, you may tear them all down and stare over.
Some of those buildings, I don't think you could fix what you have there, because they are falling down. Others could, but it's going to be the problem.
We have, you know, with that emotional sentimentality, we have some of those buildings down there, and it's not going to come easy in the community, you start getting wrecking ball out, you start wrecking the building.
Yeah, but the thing there is, it's, you as a village aren't the one running that wrecking ball, it's the property owners.
Absolutely.
So, we could say what we want there, if the property owner disagrees, that that's not what he wants, you're not getting anywhere, because a TIF doesn't allow you to acquire the property. It allows you to defer the tax in, increase on that property.
Well, generally speaking, that is correct, and that's what most communities treat it. There are a few communities that use TIF as justification to go in and wire a whole piece of buy in the domain, that slows it down dramatically, usually just the threat of that will work, but there have been cases, I worked on a project in our, that's what the community did, so, they had three, three pieces, they needed a fourth one, that guy just would not sell at reasonable price, they went through and went in process and acquired, so that can happen. That fact is one of the fears of people that are in an area, if you create a TIF district, they have a perception that you're going to go out and do that, so you need an educational piece and say, no, don't intend to do that, and be careful with that, but it does happen.
Okay, no, I just want to make sure, because a lot of this talk, it sums differently than what I've heard. Once that base is set, say it's this coming year's tax rates, okay? Somebody that were to own a piece of property, whether it's residential or anything, their taxes are not going to be affected, it's going to continue to go up, it's just a matter of where that money goes. The local taxing bodies are only going to get what we were set at at that base, at, when that TIF district is starting, any increases goes into that TIF form.
That's right.
So, financially, it really doesn't affect any homeowners that you put in, or any property, I shouldn't say homeowners, any property owners that you put into a TIF district. Their taxes are going to go up, now, some, the only ones that it would affect are those that don't want their values to go up, because it's sitting there abandoned and they got no plans to do anything with it, or want to do anything with it. Those are the only ones that will be affected, because others start taking advantage of this and, and moving in or, you know, buying a couple of parcels and doing something different within that area, and it may affect their property value, and their property value may go up. Right now, where those things are sitting, that's the, you know, the argument for other taxing bodies that may not be against it, is they're not going to get anything more for it now if it's not increasing, right?
Correct. The question I have is if, when you start a TIF district, where is that money coming from?
When you start it, there is no money.
But, if, if, as the gratitude shows, as Jonathan just said, you got your base tax value that's set, you're going to see that for the next twenty-three years, they're not going to change anything, you're going to see that as if no development ever happened, and even if the EVA went down, their value doesn't change.
If I want to cut you, just cut the things out. Where, where does that increase come from? Comes from new development, comes from inflation, and that's where the increase.
But who pays those taxes?
The property owners that are.
The same, the same.
The same as they would right now.
In that, in that, in that. We're, we're missing some key factors here. That increase is still going to be there, it's just being funneled into a separate location, it's not going to the taxing bodies. You as a property owner, if you own property in the TIF district, and all of these developments cause the EVA in that district to go up, your tax cost goes up.
Yes.
So, a homeowner or property owner's taxes will go up, it's just that they're being funneled not to the taxing bodies, but to the TIF to pay for the infrastructure.
Which is what I was, that's what I was saying though, is if it was getting a law, it's, they'd still be paying more taxes, right? Whether it's not a TIF district, say it's not a TIF district, and somebody comes in and does that, essentially, that should affect their property also, right? It should increase that, that EVA goes up, all the taxing bodies just get their, per se, or twenty dollars a year right up, instead of that extra three hundred dollars going into the TIF.
Correct.
I got a question though, you said something very early, you said inflation. If, we were at the township meeting last week, they raised their tax, let me, two percent, does that two percent go into the TIF, or do they get that two percent?
No, they would get whatever, whatever they're rated, rated times the base, so they would be getting more if they raised the rate, they would still get a little bit more.
Because I only thought you got it on the value of property, not on the actual tax collected on the property.
Correct, you get it off the value of property.
So, they raise eleven, two percent, that two percent increase in that TIF district doesn't go back to the TIF district, right? Most of the taxing.
Off the base, yes, but if the, off the increment, you get the, the inflation times the, the increment. So... So both would get more money if they raised the rate essentially, the TIF fund and the taxing body.
But the taxing body would be based on the original base EVA.
That's correct.
So would, so, so if the, if, if the EVA goes up in that 23 years.
If the EVA goes up, I can understand the TIFs, the TIF won, but EVA is stagnant and the township raised 11, 2%. That doesn't affect the TIF at all.
Correct.
That's what I'm saying.
That's correct.
Okay. But I heard the word inflation there and I'm like, whoa, whoa, you telling me that we're going to fight more in a TIF district just because all the taxing bodies are raising their rates? I don't think so, yeah.
Right?
Correct.
You know? Then I have to ask this chicken and the egg question. You got a blighted area and you make it a TIF, how in the world are you going to collect increments? Somebody's got to invest. Who's that going to, that's, that to me is the, the big fallacy of these TIF districts.
And again, if it's with their first. And again, if it's a developer, where is the incentive for him? Because if he's coming in anyways, why bother?
The incentive for him is that you enter a development agreement that says that these are the eligible costs that you will reimburse him for that you wouldn't get otherwise. So he's got a revenue stream coming in from the TIF for your agreement based on essentially the incremental revenue that will be generated by his development.
And I'm not fooling the idea, I think the TIF should be pursued, but we just have to proceed with caution because it's not this grand thing. I mean, you take Manchino, they would raise a successful TIF down there, but for the first 10 to 15 years, I bet you it was a struggle for them in, in, and I bet you they threw some money in it upfront. Or they tidied in with one of their industrial areas. Because I can't see how they can do it just down the road.
We give you another example, we did a tax increment district up in Olivia Field about five years ago. We did it west near the intersection of the car dealerships there. We thought the values were down at that time. The values have since gone down even farther. And they tore down a couple of buildings and they assessed or reassessed it. So the, the value is now down here, the base was here, it's way below the base. So essentially, they're going to cancel that TIF and create a new one.
At a lower base.
At a lower base. That's all the problem. So that could certainly happen too. So that's again, why that timing thing is an issue. The ideal time to create a TIF is when you've got an active development proposal on the table and you can put it in place to help them, but also use that to spur some other things.
So you need to develop. Or you need that vacant land that you can market, you know, to get new construction and really increase that EAB to help the entire district. And that's what we were talking about, including that land between Church Road and Miller Street. And that TIF along the trace. Downtown.
Scott, anything? Right. John, anything else?
No, no, I mean, I, I guess I would just be curious as to his opinion on it for us. Or if it's too early for you to.
Think he has to do a study?
Yeah.
Like I'm studying, I have a, yes, he said that if property is eligible, is not the right time to do it. I can answer that question, yeah, without getting further into that. My guess would be that was not very timely.
Is there any typical sizes that these, when you have a community do their first one? Do they typically go big? Do they try to stay small with it?
It's all on the table. They, they've got to be at least an acre and a half. We've done them where there are 1,000 acres before and then usually they're somewhere, you know, a couple hundred or something, but it, it's very, very.
An acre and a half, that's small.
You can do it that small. Good. Hershey?
I don't think so.
Yeah. Brian, how should it go?
I agree with you though. One last question, Mike, would you agree that before we even discuss the concept of TIF, don't we first need a vision for the downtown area?
What I was talking about when Willow, when I said Willow Springs did it right, that's what they did. They created the vision first, they knew what they wanted to do and they used TIF as a tool to do it. So yes, they had a plan.
But also remember, the other community that had a grand plan, but it went south.
Well, that was, yeah.
But they had, but they had a plan. They didn't go, they didn't go blindly into this, they had a plan. And it just, timing was not in the right point.
The difference between the two, real quick. Willow Springs, there was a market study that went along with the plan so that we knew that there was a market for the types of things that were being discussed. The other community that did their plan, had a vision of what they wanted, but they didn't really look at the realities of the marketplace. They opposed things that didn't fit the community and weren't going to work in the community yet.
They used your TIF funds.
And they did TIF funds, yes.
Now, one other question that Bob had asked, but do you, if you have residential, like, because it looks like one location, they were putting, you know, apartments in. So it doesn't need to be a business. You could build residential, it's just an apartment.
Absolutely.
But then if you, if you're carrying kids though, then you would compensate the school district for that increase in enrollment.
That's right. That's correct. There are some small towns in more rural areas where they're doing TIFs residential because that's not the way they contract any kind of residential well, there's none happening in some of these places and they really, really want it, so using TIFs to do it. And in a lot of my, closer insuburban communities, they don't want to put residential in, in a TIF because they don't want to really incentivize that. It happens on some.
And you said a key word, regardless of what we do with that type of market study. Because if the market's not there, I don't care what you're planning down there. What's going to cost you?
Anything else? Thank you, Mike.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Before we, if I have a recess to the code enforcement, break down, thank you, trustee Coleman. You've been introduced as our code enforcement officer today.
Yes, this time I'd like to introduce Aaron McCordy. He's our new code enforcement officer. Aaron, you're welcome.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thanks. All right, we'll be doing a monthly report, which will be now a recent part of the work on the back. And he's just getting his feet wet now. And just have your basketball hoop, correct? For the hoops that are on the parkways. And we're going to start doing things like that. So if you have code enforcement complaints, please call me or we'll try to make your errands and messes through. We'll go in and.
And what I'll do, Bob, is I'll get you his email address and you can forward it to all the trustees. Right now, I'm in code enforcement, not a lot of activities, so he's going to be scheduled for like Tuesdays and Thursdays from seven to three. So we will be checking his email. If you've got any concerns, just shoot him an email and we'll work on that.
Chief?
Yes, sir.
Would it be going on a regular basis, checking things on a regular scheduled basis or just as a will call order?
No, it'll be, when, when code picks up again, we come to springtime, maybe right after the, the last snowfall, he'll be putting in about 30 hours a week. But also, also with the code, he's going to take over the abandoned autos and dog tags, all the fun things.
Our, our old code enforcement program, the light on, it was a complaint-driven process. What we hoped to do was be proactive. They see something out there, deal with, you know? And, and we're going to try to do that with, with police officers actually being on the street. Right. Not that we're peering in the backyard, the obvious.
Well, and also supplements, police department too. So we do have an extra officer if, if we need one. If an officer's got to take a prisoner, transport to Joliet, that'll leave one officer on the street and Aaron can fill in that slot while he's doing his code. So it's kind of like a twofold for having the part-time officer do code enforcement.
Other things we'll be doing is we'll be making sure that all the homes have the addresses on it for number one calls. It'll be our next, probably our next winter project, make sure all homes have a visible address on the street.
Code enforcement.
Things like that. Do you have the sort of concern friendly letters on there as well? Or just case this one? Do you want your address put through the force behind this one? Because we're strong.
Anything else? Thank you.
Thanks, thanks, sir.
We take, take an airtime motion for a fire night recess?
Right. I'm loading. I thought John motioned.
All right. So we got it. Share with Robo.
Yes. Yes. Meyer, yes. 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 Five minutes, not 10.
Robo.
Eric?
Yes.
Eric, yes. Meyer, yes.
Yes. Coleman? Yes. Waylon?
Thank you. Finance administration, trustee clerk.
Yep.
How fast can we make this?
Thank you.
Timing you.
Any questions? Let me check real quick at our, our account balances. We're down 130,000 from last month, principally with a debt payment for a store plan and 112,000 that we made out of the debt account. Otherwise, really, there was no significant changes in our balances. Also included is your list of, of bills. You'll see the debt payment in there along with the payroll and fuel bills that we normally see. So nothing, any real notes. And finally, we have the graph demonstrating our balances. We're taking, it looks like the normal pattern that we've, we've had, with a general funnel, just a little bit below the million. And nothing really significant in the patterns that I see. Any questions?
Yeah. We're going to be moving all the money around here probably this week, correct? This week or next. The balances are going to fluctuate. Bottom line is going to be the same, but all these balances are going to move around there. You know? Are we making a different account for that one?
Yes.
Yes, we're going to call it 625 Dixie Highway. We are the Village Hall project, Village Hall rehab project, let's just call it, so we get used to memorizing the address, 625 Dixie Highway project. Any questions of the treasurer?
No.
I make a motion approving the activity for the prior month.
Second.
Motion on the floor, there's a second. Any questions or discussion? Robo.
Waylon?
Yes. Coleman? Yes. Meyer? Yes. Eric? Yes. Eric? Yes. Meyer? Yes. Eric?
Yes. The various reports were also provided to us in our board packet and the bills were sent to us under sub cover. Anything you want to add about?
Nah, just a couple there in italics that you didn't see, like you didn't sign the pre-based one, but I put it on there because of your question on the booths. But there wasn't those.
No, I think that was, sir. That was.
You did sign that one?
It was the other one that I didn't.
Iitalicsized it. We got a building from Metro Camp, Brockman or Truck Test, Labor Attorney for filing our agreement, and the Health and Struts Trust. And I think there was one more. Oh, Tom Canute. So Jeff, can you make a copy of that? We got Tom Canute. And the Westside Tractor, we put a new blade on the front bucket, is that correct, Bob?
Yep.
And Xylone for 663, that was the repairs to that mudwell panel we didn't make on the view of.
Okay. Any questions on bills? I make a motion approving bills at a total of 194,128 dollars and 24 cents.
Second.
A motion on the floor, there's a second. Any questions or discussion? Robo.
Eric?
Yes.
Eric? Yes. Meyer? Yes. First?
Yes. The next item we have in front of us is concerning supplemental appropriation concerning the purchase or remodeling of 625 Dixie Highway, which is going to be known as the Village Hall. The appropriation allows us to transfer funds to the, from the infrastructure account to general to pay for its 80,000, uh, $80,000 for obligation. So anything you want to add, Bob?
It's pretty interesting ordinance. Uh, ordinance next?
1202.
I make a motion for, for the ordinance 1202 of supplemental appropriation for fiscal year 2013, 2014, to provide for the purchase and remodeling of 625 Dixie Highway as a Village Hall and to provide for the transfer of funds from general, from public infrastructure to general to pay off $8,000 of obligation. 8,000.
Second.
Motion on the floor, there's a second. Any questions or discussion? Robo.
Waylon?
Yes. Coleman? No.
First?
Yes.
Meyer? Yes. Eric? No. Eric?
Yes. It's also a resolution concerning processing commission payments. This has to do with, we're adding Ribbon of Hope and the Preservation Commission. It wasn't in the original resolution, so we're just kind of getting our paperwork still in order to make sure all the commissions are in one ordinance. So I make a motion for a resolution.
2013 dash 22.
On the pro, on the processing of commission payments.
Motion on the floor, there's a second.
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Robo.
Eric?
Yes.
Eric? Yes. Meyer? Yes. First?
Yes. Waylon? Yes. The treasurer's ordinance, we're still working with the village attorney to try to get that finished hopefully. I don't expect it by year end, so we'll see it sometime next year. A later Christmas present for the 10 maybe. The five-year plan, Bob's been working with this based on where we're going. In general, Bob, you can't make the whole five-year, but the first one you can.
The numbers are gone, I'm just writing the text right now.
Okay. We're looking to get that out, is it going to be genuine? You'll have, I hope we have it done by the first year. We have a few guys, we probably don't need a board act or a technical board. But we're going to need that so we can get the, the budget ready. We're also looking to, oh, one of the items I brought up to Bob was concerning the village board meetings kind of came up, oh, what am I, two years ago, John? Thereabouts. meetings that works for all the village trustees, as well as freeing us up to be able to go to the school board meetings. So we're looking to find out what issues stop people from certain dates. If you can, let me know what those dates are. I'll put a summary together for Bob on a month's schedule. If you can provide dates to block off for your needs of, if it's first Monday, second Monday, whatever it's going to be, and, you know, the day of the week, and what week it is, where your conflicts are, I will overlay those and we'll try to find out what's going to be the next best selection. That even includes the village administrator. We're trying to make this so that, one, when I tried running for village trustee, I attended every school board meeting and every village board meeting and every planning and zoning meeting. I didn't miss one. Unfortunately, when our election occurred, the village had shifted its dates to the same day as the school. Now, granted, at the time, at one point, there was a move on the village board before I jumped, before I ran for office, was to have a village trustee at the school board meetings. Now, while at those meetings, at times it was a trustee was there, other times there wasn't, and I can guarantee you the amount of audience members that were prior of my running, there were more people in the audience at the school, village board meetings than at the school board meetings. It was almost a running joke when they said any comments from the crowd, I said, "You want me to say something?" Because I was the only one there, there wasn't one resident. So, and with two trustees having an interest in the success of the school, I think we need to look past the why don't they shift. I'd like to see what the opportunities are and see what we can do. And again, a lot of it could come down to how we're going to pay bills, and we'll have to deal with that. I'd like to see what our options are, and then I'll provide something for Bob to send out to everybody, and maybe we can talk about it at the January meeting. I don't think we're going to get it resolved right away, but I'd like to see what our opportunities are and see why we can't take the shift. So, that ends my report.
Can you insert a reminder, you may all take it.
Yes. Well, I'll send it to you. I can set that rest.
We have the, an issue for the supplemental appropriation. I would be required to vote, which was in my vote, which I did not vote.
Which you have to.
Does that require five votes?
It requires another vote.
Why?
It says it requires a two-third majority of the corporate authorities holding office. That's why I voted last time.
You're right.
At the last meeting, that is the way I.
I know you voted that time, but what was?
It's listed here as a supplemental appropriation. It requires a two-third majority of the corporate authorities holding office, which is exactly what the vote was last time, and that's by a vote.
Okay.
So therefore, I would ask that that motion.
Is it four to six?
Of the corporate authorities.
It means five. It means five. I was wondering, I was wondering also, but I figured it was just, we were just.
It's a supplemental.
I was going to research it. We didn't have the votes, I was going to go back in January.
I'll probably ask if that's the motion we made to reconsider that.
So?
Motion made, was there a second?
A second.
There was a second motion. Okay, to reconsider, we'll punch through again.
Go back on the motion, or?
No. Jonathan made motion to reconsider, and I think.
No, it was Scott reconsidered, John.
John.
Okay.
Need to get deeper voices or higher lower voices, second.
Okay. I'm starting to quieten. Since it was your board. So you go back to the motion? Yes. Then you go back to page. I make a motion, resolution two thousand thirteen, twenty-two. I don't have to, I don't know. I make a motion on the ordinance twelve oh two of supplemental appropriation for the fiscal year two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen, provide for the purchase and remodeling of six twenty-five Dixie Highway as a Village Hall and to provide for the transfer of funds from the public infrastructure to general to pay for eighty thousand in allegation. On the floor, is there a second?
Second.
Second. Any questions or discussion?
Should reconsider, now you're voting on the motion, yes. Roll call.
For the reconsider.
Is everybody clear on what we need to take a roll call for?
Sorry. So forget my motion. Forget my motion. Okay, this is just under. Yes. Time out.
So everyone knows what's going on. There's a motion on the floor to reconsider the vote on the supplemental appropriation, right?
Okay.
Who made that motion?
Scott. Okay.
First, second.
That's what they're voting on.
Yes.
Correct.
Yes.
And I require a two-thirds so that we, doesn't have.
Right. So I'm holding. So reconsider. You got to get your. Roll call. Roll call.
Motion to reconsider, ordinance number twelve oh two.
Waylon?
Yes.
Holm?
No.
First?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Aaron?
Just to reconsider.
Just to reconsider.
It doesn't mean you're approving it.
Okay. Yes.
Yes. Okay, are you ready, Jenny?
I don't read that to her.
Wait, I want to wait until she's ready. Because we complicated this.
This is to re-vote on the change.
Yes. I'll redo the motion.
Okay, thank you.
You ready?
Yeah.
Okay. I make a motion for the, for the ordinance twelve oh two of the supplemental appropriation for the fiscal year two thousand thirteen and two thousand fourteen, to provide for the purchase and remodeling of six twenty-five Dixie Highway as a Village Hall, and to provide for the transfer of funds from public infrastructure to general to pay off eighty thousand dollars in allegation.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor, there's a second. Any questions or discussion?
We all know we're re-voting on ordinance number twelve oh two for the supplemental appropriation. That's it, before I miss this one.
Roll call.
Clearing.
Yes.
Aaron?
No.
Meyer?
Yes.
First?
Yes.
Holm?
No.
Waylon?
Yes.
Saman?
Yes.
Anything else? That ends my report.
Yes.
For the second time.
Okay. All the trustees of Brockman's Parks and Recreation, Christie, go ahead.
Ordinance on park rules, we're still in the process of that. A meeting with the Beecher Recreation Board and July Commission, we met on November twenty-first, had a good meeting. Mike Keeter was there, he's the new president. Pat Kraus was there, he's the new vice president. And we talked about several different things. We talked about possible new beer stand and kind of redoing that. We talked about the beer stand and how it's set up, if we could put like a concession stand in one corner of that beer stand and kind of work with that and kind of redo different things with that. So that's in the process. I think what we need to do is come up with a plan for the Fourth of July Commission, come up with a building plan on how we kind of sketch it out. But I think it could be a multi-use building, and it could be storage, it could be, you know, beer stand, it can also be the concession stand. So that's going to be in the works. If we did that type of thing, we would actually move or take down the existing concession stand next to the field, you know, the old one. So there's a lot of things that we're talking about. We also talked about scheduling, and we talked about the different teams that they, that are Beecher Rec and that they sanctioned, and we talked about other teams possibly using the field, and they're not affiliated with Beecher Rec. So we need to, we talked about that. We also talked about the condition of the Walton Stad Park as far as grading the infields and so on. We talked about possibly getting a person to maybe take interest in those fields and possibly help bring those fields up, you know, for practice. I think we all know that the Beecher Rec wants to use Fireman's Park, also the softball field at the grade school for their actual games, but we're talking about using Walton Stad. Get it up to park to at least practice out there and have some more facilities for that. We also talked about, and I talked to Todd about this today, scoreboards going up in the, on Fireman's One, and also a scoreboard that would be, it wouldn't be a permanent structure on the north field out of Miller Street, but it would be put up during the fall season, you know, as far as that goes. But we talked about that as far as the scoreboard. We also talked about possibly getting outlets up on the north end of Fireman's Park. So there's a lot of different things that we talked about in that meeting. So we'll have different meetings throughout the year to kind of keep everybody posted as far as what's going on. So that's what our meeting was about. But it was a good one. Jerry Meyer. So we don't have, we didn't have any lines or anything like that as far as the beer stand. This was all talk, this was all, I think Chuck asked Jerry, and Chuck was the one that, Jerry was the one that was present. Is that correct, Rick?
That's correct.
Yeah.
Thank you. Waiting for the beer committee to come up with a suggestion on the building and move from there.
Okay, update on six twenty-five Dixie Highway project. Contract was signed, and earnest money was put in and delivered to Inland Bank, closing is scheduled to occur prior to December twenty-seventh. Does that still look like?
I don't want the church last time to make sure.
Oh, okay.
They put this one.
Which one?
Oh, which church? Maybe that looks wrong.
Yeah.
It's moving very slow.
One item before you get off of that, Scott. There's a bill we still need to pay, that's the survey on that building. It's the ALTA survey to David Avery and Associates. Have to make a motion on this thing? It's a bill.
It would have been on the accounts payable, but we decided to pay it out of the new account, not on the listed bills. So the new account had to be created first.
Right.
Are you making that motion?
I want to make sure we can do it so I don't go and say it two or three times. I'm looking, I'm looking for the final judge and jury who's on your right.
Make a motion.
Okay.
It was, it was, you could also say it was a consensus of the board to pay it, whereas the bills for January. I just want the guy to be five weeks for the point.
I'd like to get the finding of the, of the knowledge clerk.
I'm not sure, and I would say you make it a motion, and we can see whether it's a pay.
Okay. I make a motion paying David Avery and Associates for performing the ALTA survey on six twenty-five Dixie Highway Beecher in the amount of seventeen hundred dollars out of the six twenty-five Dixie Highway account.
Second.
A motion and second. Any questions or discussion?
I have a question. Why are we paying for an appraisal if we haven't even gotten the?
It's a survey. It's a survey.
Why are we, why are we doing all, why are we paying any bills at all if we haven't even acquired the property yet?
That's required for the title search and the proposal.
We re-terated it.
There's a signed, there's a signed contract, and the earnest money is turned in, so there's an approved contract that we just haven't closed yet. And this was one of the things that we have to do as far as part of the contract.
So we're paying for the survey rather than the zone?
We agreed to that, yeah. Any other questions? Roll call.
Waylon?
Yes.
Holm?
No.
Goodness.
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Aaron?
No.
Aaron?
Yes.
Okay, and we also met, had a meeting with Mike Stidula. I think everybody received a copy of the new layout of the building, but that's, again, that's still in discussion as far as the move.
There was a floor plan that was set there, but we didn't see that.
Right.
The only, you didn't see that?
Oh, no, it's, uh.
Oh, two days ago.
Two days.
Oh, I know, I know.
We're also talking about trying to have certified emergency operations center in the board room in the new building, so, and obviously, there's going to be, our board meetings will be in that area as well. So that ends my report.
Just as a caveat, in that four plan, there was some small modification, so there should be another drawing coming up this afternoon. When you build it, it's all in, Chris, Aaron?
Building Department monthly report was enclosed for review, and the PCC workshop scheduled for Thursday, December nineteenth, at seven fifteen. At this meeting, PCCs will present their site and traffic studies to PCC for review prior to a public hearing scheduled for January twenty-third. The village has reviewed the full completed application for special use permit, and the site plan review meeting occurred with the staff and the village engineer and the new village planner on November nineteenth. For the site plan and the first draft of the traffic schedule for review at the precise, tenant to the PCC meeting was encouraged by all the trustees. Updated the zoning ordinance changes pertaining to fences. At the last meeting, a question was raised as to the true cost of a point for variance versus a seven hundred and fifty dollar charge. Cost may vary based on how many cases there are in a single evening, but enclosed is a summary of the costs associated with one meeting for one variance. And that's my report.
I can make a suggestion on that item, refer it to your committee. We have a meeting to discuss those costs and defenses. And then from that, we'd probably make a recommendation to the board to decide whether or not they want to refer everything to planning and zoning. That would be the process. Corrected, we're not going to make any changes to the fence ordinance. I don't know, we have to refer the charge to them.
It is my understanding that we've already agreed, everyone voted to give the all petitions.
This isn't a petition, this is something that we want to revise, something in this possibility.
You want to revise the fee?
Either revise the fee or the fence ordinance, which is a discussion.
Okay.
Which is my understanding, have the committee make a recommendation to the board, and then the board will decide whether or not they want to refer to PCC point changes. Would that also include the charge? If we just want to change the fees?
No, the fee is exclusive.
To us. Okay, so we got some direction.
Anytime you want to get together.
Probably after the hour, is it? No rush. Unless something comes up.
I don't think I think we put a touch on it.
I don't know how you say that.
I don't know, Jonathan Dexter did, I don't know. You realize why he waited so long to do it? There was a warm day there, that you can't have ice cream sitting in a warm weather.
Police safety, Christie, go.
Police Department monthly report is enclosed for review. Also code enforcement monthly report is enclosed. Update on the school safety and security.
Not too much to report on that, I will have more at our next meeting. We're continuing our discussions with neighboring departments and also with Will County and state police, and we're going forward with coming with, together with some sort of response, a critical incident response that involves all the communities in proximity. So that's what we're working on in regards to that.
Anything on daycare services? Are we, we haven't reached those yet?
That'll probably be this spring.
All right. Results of storm with hurricane force winds on November seventeenth. This was one of the windiest events we've had in some time. Winds were clocked at eighty miles per hour in the village and five miles southeast of town, and ESI tornadoes confirmed, and touchdowns were eight tenths of a mile from noon to one p.m. to one thirty p.m., lowering several trees and damaging a farm stand. Beechwood warning sirens went off for the first time at twelve thirty p.m., but the Gould Street Siren did not go off. Chief activated the sirens a second time from his portable, street, street siren, from, second time from his portable radio at twelve thirty-three, and then they all went off. Malfunction occurred due to the radio system, not the condition of the sirens. Since tones are required for all these communities, it is believed that intense radio traffic may have interrupted the first set of tones. The backup tones then worked. The sirens were not due to the reported touchdown warning, which was later determined to be a whole city diamond tornado. We also need to remind the residents that there is no longer an all-clear signal. Chief, any comments on this?
Well, I don't know if I characterize the radio as a backup tone, because it is a primary tone also. I don't want anyone to think that, well, our backup works, but our primary doesn't. Because when I activate it off the radio, that is a primary. It's just, the whole idea with the consolidation at East Com, they, in past, they'd have to hit University Park Siren, they hit Moni Siren, they hit Creed Siren, Pia Tones and Beechers. So we got them with just one button to activate all the sirens. So we don't believe it's a siren malfunction. There was a lot of radio traffic going on with all the departments, both police and fire. It's just with the radio, you got priority when you activate the sirens.
Is it possible, Jeff, that the fire department reported that sirens didn't work, and they just didn't hear the one at the police station, but the other two went off?
The windows were so great, I don't know if I could hear them.
Yeah. Because we had problems with that one in town, the little federal siren, that is kind of so low in the valley, sometimes that signal doesn't get to that specific siren, but the coverage is provided by the Gould Street Siren. So we're not really sure if the Gould Street Siren went off the first time or not.
I have a question too about the all-clear, you know, because I think growing up here,
Is it possible, Jeff, that the fire department reported the sirens didn't work and they just didn't hear the one at the police station that go to one on?
The windows were so great, I don't know if I could hear them.
Yeah. Because we had problems with that one in town, the little federal sirens. That is so low in the valley, sometimes that signal doesn't get to that specific siren. But the coverage is provided by the Gould Street Siren. So we're not really sure if the Gould Street Siren went off the first time or not.
I have a question too about the all-clear. You know, because I think growing up here, you get used to that all-clear.
Anymore.
And now, but you can blow multiple times. Because I know the sirens went off once, and then they went off...
Again.
Again.
Well, that's because Jeff was concerned that he didn't hear it and was concerned that the sirens didn't go off. We had barely heard it in our house, but the winds were so strong. And Bob said, the one on shirts went off. Well, the problem was the winds were from the southwest. So it's literally blowing, the noise is going towards hunters. So Jeff hit it again because he wasn't sure it went off.
And Joe Cook, who lives in Hunter's Chase, said the siren almost blew him out of his living room, it was so loud. But that was right near the wood.
Right. So, the idea of the all-clear was an old way of doing things? And it's now you need to listen to the radio or your TV.
The new rule is one hour from the time you hear the siren. So if you hear it a second time, the one-hour clock starts again, second time. Because you will get multiple tornado warnings in a line of storms. And you can hear one warning and 20 minutes later, new warning. So the rule is one hour from the time you hear the siren, you should take cover.
And if you literally can strike a line from Washington all the way up, then it was almost a straight line.
And I think we should put that in our newsletter, you know, if we communicate that.
Real real important, and again, I'm going to stress it again. That sirens do not indicate an all-clear signal at all. That's probably 20 years old now. The one thing that we need to emphasize, and I think it's probably safe to say, yes, a multiple siren could mean the fact that there was a malfunction, you set it off again. But multiple sirens could be, you better take cover, and you better take cover quietly, man, because it's bad. Because I've known of other municipalities that tell them, and if you listen to the news reports of what's going on, that they continue to hit the siren because they know it's coming. So I think it's real important to emphasize that if the siren goes off, it means you take cover. And if you wait, you're probably going to wait too long. And like, Trustee Cleary just said, need to make it very clear that we don't issue it, the Weather Service doesn't even issue an all-clear. It's basically what is on the radar at the time. Like you just said, that it could be multiple systems coming, or there could be nothing coming based upon radar. That's how you decide whether or not there's an all-clear.
In more Oklahoma, there's video of people going to a gas station, buying gas, and you can see the tornado bearing down on the gas station.
And you can hear the sirens going off.
But the sirens already went off and the three minutes was up and there is no sirens. So what they do, they keep hitting the siren all the time. So there's people passing through, and they're just getting gas.
I trust you, Paul.
Yes, I feel we need to educate our people now that, don't wait for an all-clear sound.
Also, don't wait for the village to hit that siren again. If you hear it, you better get in.
Well, Dad, or if the siren blows, that means you better stay on the cover for another, what, hour?
Just an hour. It's the rule of thumb, unless the radio or television tells you the storms are happening.
Because we listen for an all-clear sound, but never...
No, everybody has to remember too, we're all responsible for our own safety.
Oh, I understand.
I mean, they're called outdoor warning sirens, because they were designed to warn people that are outdoors. They weren't home, they weren't, didn't have access to radio or television. They're at the ballgames, they're on the golf course. That's why they're outdoor warning sirens. Now we got smartphones, we got cell phones, so even if you lose your power, like, you know, I had the National Weather Service constantly on my phone. And I lost power. If I didn't have that cell phone, I would have lost computer power. But it is an outdoor warning siren.
You know, and there are times where, when we're in our house, we can't hear those sirens. So, and honestly, believe it or not, my once-ho's got the worst hearing possible said, "Did you hear that?" I'm like, "Okay, let's go over the window." And you could, you could literally hear that, that siren scream.
I wonder if our older residents in the community are aware of this?
I think we could, maybe Flare. This one, we can have. So we can do it again, say?
And I think maybe a detailed thing of why you hear it, why you don't hear it, because of the rush of the...
When's the next senior...
Is it practice?
That'll be in the springtime.
Maybe ten.
Yeah.
Is there another senior function?
Yeah, they got it tonight.
Bring it up, the senior function.
Tomorrow.
Make a suggestion, and Chief, if I remember right, I asked that you could come to the next senior practice.
Yes.
That might be your topic for that particular...
Okay.
A suggestion, and a suggestion for you, and what's left?
Yeah, yeah, because I'm sure our older residents, I was still listening, waiting for an all-clear. But if, if you're supposed to take cover, an hour after the sirens, I guess, blows. You know, you could be sitting in your basement. Well, I don't know if people realize they're supposed to take cover for an hour after the sirens blow. I was aware of that.
That's a first thing?
Yeah.
Me too. Well, if you're waiting for the all-clear.
Yeah.
You'll be waiting. You'll be down there.
You can't say that. Because if you hit the second wise, we...
It was certainly after.
Yeah, but that's an all-clear.
It's that.
No, that thing isn't all-clear.
But we're saying...
My joke.
It's okay. Okay. Well, yeah, can you say something earlier, because if you rely on the sirens for severe weather, that's probably a bad thing. You should buy a National Weather Service radio or have something that gives you more advanced warning that it's coming. When the siren goes off, that means something, hit something real close. Am I right, Jeff? It usually means...
Yeah.
It means an alarm hit after. Yeah. You're better off having a National Weather Service radio with an alarm on it. You get a half-hour warning, and it'll tell you how long you've got to take cover, it'll tell you exactly how long.
Any other thoughts?
Yes, sir. My next item. Fourteen truffles of wood chips were collected, and we are now over a week behind in leaf collection. And the village president can provide an update on what he saw and the damage which occurred to the roofs of two homes in our village.
Basically, the... We had two houses that were damaged by trees that were in the parkway. I've actually seen it worse in town, I think, before. The only thing is, at this time, there was a larger tree that came down, which slipped down poles and power lines. And like I said, we did have basically two, two houses that were damaged. Golf course was damaged. Power lines south of town were down. Pretty much it in a nutshell.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. The storm damage report is enclosed for your review. Several trees have come down as a result of the storm. This has caused us to divert some funds to tree removal, so no more stumps will be removed this year. We will have to budget more for stump and tree removal next year as well. Buddy, have we planted any parkway trees this year?
Not yet, no.
Not yet.
And if it's, if the weather doesn't cooperate, I'll probably be putting them... I am down at the sewer plant right now, the trees. They really don't have to be, they're not going to die, but I would probably trench like I did before, a couple of years ago. We kind of ran into the same thing, and line them up, and then we'll just hit it early spring. So that's where we're at with that. I can tell you guys this, that tomorrow Arnold will be in town. We'll be removing two of the big trees that we cannot do. And we will probably the rest of the week be finishing taking down the trees from the storm damage. And that'll be it for us, you know, pretty much chipping stuff up for the winter time. Leaf pickup too is done today, that was it. Picked up the rest of it.
In the snow.
In the snow.
Those two trees are there on Prairie?
No.
Park? Or... Oh, one's on Park.
There is one on Prairie.
Yeah, there's one.
Mark with a white X on it, yeah.
I'm just not sure if Arnold's taking that down or we are.
Yeah.
If there's an X on it, we are.
Okay.
Okay, any questions of the chief or myself?
I just have a couple of comments. Now we're getting into snow, to remind all the residents, no parking on village streets after 2:00 in snowfall. Otherwise, those cars can be ticketed. If they're parked in a business district, they can be towed. And also on shoveling or snowblowing, make sure that they don't push it in the street. Because it doesn't do public works any good to plow the streets when everybody pushes it back in. So there are ordinances governing both of those, which our new code enforcement officer, Aaron Decordi, will address.
Thank you for the reminder, Chief. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Well, of course, many of your show report, Chris.
Water and sewer departments, both monthly reports are enclosed for your review. Just a touch up on water main breaks. Several breaks have occurred in the last month. This says two on Penfield, one on Gould. Initially Gould in Indiana also. We also had Woodward. Penfield by department. Penfield? Yeah, there was actually three.
You know, I'll comment on this. The reason, you know, the other main breaks were directly attributed to the main breaks on Gould Street. I mean, the Gould Street breaks were directly in front of the towers. And, you know, it's kind of like basically pushing a watermelon through a garden hose. I mean, once, once that thing blows out, it creates a hydraulic hammer. And, you know, two or three blocks away, where it hits the weakest spot, it's going to blow. So, I think it was like on a Friday night, we had the one, and there were two breaks almost immediately. Ronnie called me in the morning time, might have been on a Thursday morning. And then the Sunday morning, you know, following that, it was our Sunday evening. You know, the mayor called me up around 6:00 o'clock. And we worked like 17 hours to get it done the last time. So there was a total of nine main breaks. It was caused by about a 10-foot section of just really rotten old main in front of that tower there on Gould Street.
Okay. Rush pickup was current the last time. Rush is done now.
Well, except for what we're going to take.
What we're going to be taking down.
That's correct.
Leaf collection is also completed for the year. Trucks will now be getting ready for snow and ice removal. Buddy, F-800, I know it went to get the glove on.
And it could be tomorrow or Wednesday, and I'll be bringing it back.
Parkway tree planting, just want to add.
Just want to add.
Just explain that the trees are here and stacked. Valve turning, valve turning's been done.
Just waiting for a final report, I will tell you this, there's probably about five broken valves, stems, whatever. Not that they're...
Well, yeah.
And they're going to have to be repaired or replaced.
Elm Street water main?
Done, other than going back in the springtime and doing the restoration. Everybody's up and running and happy and cheerful.
Holiday decorations are up. Status of the last remaining sidewalks that need to be replaced?
That's, I, I really am not, we're, we're not going to do it. I'm not going to bring a winter brunt blend in, it's, it's too late in the season. So it'll have to, I'll have to deal with the stone that's there until springtime.
Somebody should contact, we're not even... Just volunteer. I mean, they were right, I know, I mean, they promised the new, they'd be done, but then we ran into the least storm. The water main breaks.
Okay. Public Works Committee meeting is scheduled for Thursday, January 2nd at the Village Hall at 6:30 to review the first draft of the new water and sewer master plan. And 13, consider a motion authorizing $1,500 to Baxter and Woman for the completion of an application for the safe routes to school. This is an 80/20 matching grant, which is MFT eligible. The project selected is solar-powered flashing LED school zone signs on Dixie at Miller, Penfield, from Catalupa to the Bridge Church, from Pheasant Chase Circle to South Park, and Cardinal Creek Boulevard from Church Road to Paul Deagle. The project cost is expected to be approximately about $50,000, of which our 20% would be $10,000 coming from the village's MFT account. This is also a reimbursement program, so we'll have the front of $50,000 out of MFT, which should be fine. Applications are due January 30th. So, I will make a motion authorizing $1,500 to Baxter and Woman for the completion of an application for the safe routes to school.
Second. It's a motion on the fourth or the second. And is there any questions or discussion? Go ahead.
Aaron?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
The first?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Thank you, just for part of the discussion, that was... You had three projects, correct? What were they, that were suggested for this?
The other was sidewalk routes to the school, filling in, you know, in our subdivisions, these blank spots of empty lots. But not, but not everyone, it would be, it would be a main road route from, from subdivision A. Yeah, you'd have to pick like one spot and say, from here to, to the school. It's got to be continuous. It's got to be one continuous, the way it was explained to us. And this is something that, when this, this option came up. It's inexpensive, but, I mean, anytime you can get something on an 80/20 grant is, is a good thing. But this is, this is big with some of the stuff that we got coming up, with the new dollar store going in. There'll be possibly a PCC meeting, you know, and possibly a gas station going in right by the hockey school. These LED lights are solar-powered. This is something that's not going to be, it's going to be very minimal on the engineering end of the project, which can add to the costs extremely high, because this is something that public works can install. I mean, they'll go in, just like any other street sign that we install over a place. As I said, they're solar. And it's, it's about the safety of the kids. We got a lot of kids that are constantly crossing the streets, whether they choose, you know, they choose not to take the bus or whatever. But they are, these kids are crossing, you know, busy streets like Route 1, Church. And anytime you have school going on, there's increased traffic in those areas. So, I think it was a positive, positive thing to do at a very minimal cost. So. Results of 12, 3, 13 committee meeting. Minutes are enclosed for your review. Please note that this, at this meeting, the replacement of the Miller Street lift station force made. And the replacement of a pump mower at the sewer plant, what law was discussed and direction was given. Buddy's kind of got an idea of the direction to run with that. We discussed manpower needs in the department in light of the water main breaks and storm damage. And that was just about it. Buddy just kind of let us know what his department was going through and stuff. And I think everyone got an email, just pretty much right after the storm of, you know, all these things that had happened. You know, these guys were basically working overnight on these main breaks. And all of a sudden, then you don't have anyone here, you know. I wish I would have known sooner I would have done it, but, I mean, a big hats off to the mayor and our village administrator. And these guys, and a big thanks to Terry Meyer from the highway department for coming out and helping. And our mayor was out there picking up brush. I caught him on the last end, which was not bad, it was still the last couple of hours of the day. But, you know, all day, our, our mayor and our administrator were out there actually picking up the residents' brush, which... You gotta do what you gotta do. I, I don't think you'd see that in many other communities, so I think it's a very admirable thing that they did. And that's it. There's no other questions, that concludes my report.
Okay, that was all, Mr. Christie, man.
Latest communications update. We're still struggling with Facebook and Twitter, but at the IML conference, we saw a company that creates smartphone apps, which I think would really be a cool way to go. There's, it actually, they had me wanting to download and play with it. There was one for the city of River Grove, and one was Bentonville. And it's the same company that did both apps. The Bentonville one is a little more municipal, where they has a directory of village officials. You can report various code enforcement issues or street lights that are out. All the apps have that capacity, and you just send in a report of where it is, and you can send it right to the village. The one for River Grove went a little further, and I'm not sure what the difference in cost, but we'd have to talk to them. But River Grove actually goes as far as having businesses listed, and they have different stores, school district, service businesses, doctors' offices. So it's something that you could possibly partner with the Chamber of Commerce and do a little more than, than just the basic. But, but, probably they quoted us at IML just off the top of their heads, looking at the size of the community, was $400 to set it up. But it's $2,000 a year to maintain it. I don't even know what they embossed, because we never got to the point where we said, "I haven't talked to them yet." But they says they could integrate it so that if you did have a Facebook or a Twitter account, they could do updates, they could do the archiving for you, so you wouldn't have to worry about FOIA. So it's an interesting way to go. I want to talk to maybe Chuck Hane and see if the chamber would be interested in hearing the presentation. I've already emailed those people, and they're willing to come out and talk to us up price. But that would be an interesting route to take. And, you know, people that have smartphones, you just download, you have the main page, you can even put alerts down. You can have important alerts, and then there's a page for news where, you know, rush pickup ads this week, or it's time for dog tags. You can put little news accounts down. And for those that don't have smartphones, they can still rely on Village Newsletter, you can know they're going. Nixol that we've used before was used after the sirens in the last storm to advise everyone of the impending storm coming. However, when we get things like water main breaks, something happens in the middle of the night, you can't get messages out to residents, and not everybody knows what's going on. So, you know, everything we do is going to be limited in one way or another.
Chief, you were talking about Nixol and some of the competitors out there.
Yeah.
Home calling, are you going to get a presentation at some point?
We'll get a proposal from different vendors. The, the Nixol platform we're using is just the limited, gets the free. So you don't get a lot for free, one user. You, you upgrade and you get more services, which includes voice. You can do specific areas, which we can't do now. And there's other vendors out there to provide the same service. I particularly like Nixol. But what I'm going to do is get some cost comparison, see if we're talking about the same thing. And then I'll present it to you as a board. I'd rather talk to committee first, that we could discuss that, and then it can go to the full board.
Okay.
There's a letter in the paper from Comcast announcing rate increases effective January 1st. Looks like some broadcast TV feed that's going to be animized.
Happy New Year. It's all the New Year rates that's usually viewed.
And then we also had, we met several times for our four-year strategic... Um, and then, uh, we also had, we met several times for our four-year strategic plan. We had many hours of discussion and the document was written in segments. So this'll be the foundation of our decision-making processes as we move forward and provide staff some guidance as to how to proceed with certain projects. Do the board members want to vote on a resolution adopting this now or do you guys want more time to move it over? I know there were, it was kinda, you know, rephrased in some areas.
I had to paraphrase some things and I had to make some assumptions, like all, you can start with a mission and I'll be, we never talked about a mission. So I included the two thousand and nine mission statement that we came up with, but we never really discussed it. So it's entirely up to you, if you feel comfortable, the way the plan is written now, we can go on it tonight, or wait until January, read it some more. Or in January.
Is it for four or five years?
It's a four-year.
This is a five-year.
Fourteen to eighteen?
The back of this thing says, "A resolution adopting a five-year plan of priorities and policies." Unfortunately, it goes from fiscal year of two thousand and fifteen to two thousand and eighteen.
Fifteen, sixteen, seventeen. Hold on, I missed one.
But you wanna start that next, not next year, but the year after? Not two thousand and fourteen to two thousand and fifteen?
Should be fourteen.
It should be five years.
We usually did these in four-year increments, correspond with the election, when three fifteens is in there. It's one of you, you don't make a five-year, that's fine, but...
I'm just saying, your resolution should document here, it should have there. So it's gonna be fifteen or fourteen through seventeen? Fiscal year of fourteen to fiscal year of seventeen?
Should be four years. I don't necessarily know off mine on this, because in four years, you might have all the players you don't know.
Do we wanna look this over for next month?
Yeah.
All right, we will postpone that until next month. Tiff presentation results, it's application to Intergovernmental Committee, basically what we think about what we heard tonight, and we think it would be useful to put that in front of the Intergovernmental Committee. I thought, I liked it.
Yeah, what, what he said, I think we have to prepare people, you know? And even if we don't do it for two, three, five years, you know, I mean, you gotta talk about it, you gotta get everybody on the same page.
And specifically be very clear, even a little more clear than tonight, I know he's giving us an overview, but how it exactly impacts or doesn't impact school district and people were expecting their tax.
Also keep in mind, the taxing bodies have all changed also since we last had this.
And I think it's good that you got it in front of you before you even make a decision. If you wanna do this, say, hey, we don't know, we're just bringing this up for all the guys to talk about it. And can they buy into it better when you say, well, we've decided we're gonna do this, here it is? You know, I think it's better that you just be upfront and say, it's one of the options we're looking at. Let's listen to them and ask questions and then we'll have a comment. That would be the last Thursday and January. Have already set a date for you guys in the future.
And next concludes my report.
Thank you. The Elian Expressway, I don't have enough data, Bob is on the Elian Corridor Committee that that day posted.
These committees are certainly rewarding because the holidays are approaching. But the county does have a half million and its core accounts is gonna decide on how to spend the half million, but whatever we do, we gotta get county war approval on it. So we're at a point now where each of the five municipalities along the corridor will get three grand in addition to our open match, which is the six thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars or thirty-six one hundred and twenty-five to the local, but it's not friends of mine who's trying to update. But it has to approve the Elian Corridor and it has to include some sustainability measures. In other words, you can't take the money and say, we're gonna do a downtown improvement plan. It has to have a larger area and encompass the Elian Corridor. The need out there, land use planning, this is important. So we'll help ensure that this is important. But again, the D and Z have been waiting for, what, a year and a half now, updated land use plan, we just waited for the funding.
Three, maybe four, around one quarter, about that.
Uh, yes, they had an RFP process, they met with six potential vendors that believed last week. Those vendors are now preparing their RFPs and then we will, uh, sit down with the subsidiaries and managers and go through a vetting process, then we bring to the committee the top three and then the decision we made is what vendor we use for that stuff. But that's moving along and they got about twenty-sixty grand for that stuff. No local match, but no local funding, so that doesn't matter. That'll be strictly a top-down type of thing.
For county government, I think there's nothing really there to report. Basically, the paragraph there is self-explanatory as far as the, uh, let's say if we had a construction vote, projects are going on, we need utilities to move some power lines or some, or some gas lines or something like that. It seems like the utilities are dragging a few. And then there was some, uh, questions on what was taxed and was not taxed on the construction material. Metropolitan Mayor's pocket, there was nothing really there to report, except the current Republican candidates were there, gave their sales speech, for lack of other terms, prior meeting, if you recall, the Democratic campaign, it's clear. We'll come to EMA, update their four-year hazard mitigation plan. Right now, our current employee, Donna Loomney, uh, she's, uh, had some direction as far as what language to write it in and she will be, uh, basically rewriting our disaster plan. Now, we did get a briefing of the, uh, tornadoes that day. Uh, when we went to the Angele, we actually drove through Frankfurt, where you could actually see the path of the tornado order, and then it went up and missed the residential area. If anybody's familiar with the rain drope, I see you, me, we went right, right...
South.
South of there. It turned out that there's a new horse farm or whatever is out there, it took off a roof there and you saw an example of the trees being totally stripped. And then it threw out the, uh, the debris on the opposite side of the road and then farther down, you can see within, there's nothing. Well, according to the Frankfurt mayor, it lifted there and missed the residential areas out there and that word came back down again. So, sort of interesting. Uh, Fuel Committee, we met, uh, this week and basically we're going out for bids. Uh, we're currently on the open market right now for MOLAD. Diesel fuel is not up until, uh, what's diesel fuel?
Uh, we went under a requirement, we were in March, so we're, we're looking.
And right now, we're on the open market on MOLAD, we're going out for bid again, yeah. Beecher Mausoleum, half of us were there and for those that weren't, debate, the long story short, is Beecher Mausoleum is currently a private entity, is on the National Register of historic, uh, buildings, whatever you wanna call it. It is a private entity and basically she's asking for help from the township and the municipalities. Both the township and the municipalities are sort of in agreement by saying, as long as it's a private entity, our hands are tied and until it becomes a vacated entity or vacated mausoleum, uh, that's when the township would step up to the plate and basically be required to take over. As far as the village is concerned, it is optional of whether or not we want to consider, uh, taking over any or all parts of the mausoleum, but as our understanding, as long as it's a private entity as of now, we can't touch it with one exception. Uh, if the village wants to consider, and I haven't had a chance to discuss this in detail with the police chief, like schools, there's a law that says that they can contract with the municipality for law enforcement if you're within one mile of, of village and you're in an arco-pan area. There is a law that says you can contract with the municipality if your cemetery or the mausoleums are within that one mile, which this would fall into that. And I don't know if that's something that the board would consider, or what I would prefer is, first, we can discuss it with the chief, because we have not discussed it in detail, and then if the chief can make a recommendation to the board, we can discuss it later.
So just to run that to the chief.
You're gonna have two issues. One, there is no access in the north into that, that's private property. Not the mausoleum's property, but residential property. In the wintertime, the village can't plow down that area because you're plowing on a private property. We talked about that once before to get the school buses down there. And we've approached those residences, I wanna say Scott, even one of them, we've talked with them, and they do not want the village to be involved with them. So if the police are going into that area, they may not be able to go through there in the wintertime because the village cannot plow through there.
I would assume they'll throw the access to mausoleum in the south of the Almister Plaza and what, because they were there.
But you may not be able to turn around. I think that drive is a through and there's no turnaround, so I don't want the police officers getting in there, then getting stuck.
Thank you. I don't even know if the chief is even recommending it at this point, so we can just...
I'm just saying, there's other issues you have to worry about when you do that.
Uh, and there was an opinion by the village attorney in our package tonight, because we did require what to see what, because we were left the impression by the speaker that night that we were required to do this, that, the other thing, and so we saw a legal opinion from the attorney, which was regular and writing. The next thing is, it says consider request, it was actually not a request, it's an inquiry. Basically, Circle K has been approaching the municipalities and asking, we allow a pour license within the gas station so they can put in video gaming. I had already responded right off the bat and said, I don't think that's something we would want to consider, and I would not want to consider as legal commissioner. But then as they went on, he pointed out that basically the way they're getting along the law is, uh, they put all the single servings, like they currently have now, a beer can or a small aircraft bottle of alcohol, if you wanna call it that, behind the counter. The customer, who goes up to the counter, asks for one serving. There are restrictions for only one serving and they get it from the other counter, so they are actually served. They take that alcohol beverages, they take it back to the video gaming area, they are allowed to consume it there, that's it, it ends. They get it right the law, that way they can put video gaming in. He's emphasizing it, that right now, that gaming law also... There's a lot of the trucks... That's what they're sort of looking at. So based upon that conversation, I said, well, I said, again, I don't, still don't think that's something we would wanna consider. I would bring it up to the board just for discussion and then I ended it by saying that, but if in fact the Elian Expressway goes in, let's say there's an option to put a truck out there and something that we would desire, certainly anything and everything could be considered at a particular point in time, but right now, it would just be in our Circle K's in town. So I actually, I would just like to get some guidance, basically whether you agree with my suggestion, saying I don't think this is something we would wanna do.
I agree with that. I don't think we wanna get involved.
Didn't think so, but just wanted to bring it up to the board for, uh, consensus. Thank you. The update on the trains parking at the crossing. There was a copy of an email in there to make the long story short on that, we've been discussing, um, it's not gonna be... Short, we were discussing with the resident, with the railroad, to try to get the trains staged further south of town so there wouldn't be a residential area. What it boils down to is... They can't, there's not enough room, there is no other solutions, the trains have to park there. If they try to park farther south of town, they will begin to park, they will begin to block crossings, which also includes farmer's crossings, which they cannot block, and they have to be within five hundred feet of that crossing. So when they add it all up, at the average of those trains, uh, they, they do not have a solution for us at this particular point in time. And he didn't bring it up, the gentleman I was talking to, he very nicely said, I actually brought it up, something in the future, we have to realize when developments come into town. I don't think it's a good idea that we allow residential area along railroad tracks. It's here, eventually, the people, the track, granted, the trains are there first and then the residents come along later, but it's only a matter of time before someone starts complaining about the trains being there. So somewhere down the road, when you have a development comes in or something like that, we have to create some type of bumper zone. And granted, I don't know how much a bumper zone is gonna do with a big train coming down the road, but, uh, we have to be consider of that down the road.
Like a sound barrier or something?
A sound barrier or something like that.
Well, the problem we have is, it's, it's not, it's not only that, I mean, the diesels aren't idle. It's not the sound barrier, that's the problem, it's the fuel and the, and the exhaust vibration. The other problem is, remember, years ago, trains weren't parking there. So when those residential areas were built up, weren't trains parked there, there'd maybe be one there once a month if you were lucky, because they were waiting for a cleared signal. Now the amount of train traffic you have, and they do go down a one rail, you're restricted by lights for them, and that's why it's happening. And they're also parking, they can, if they don't park south of Indiana, they're parking all the way up by Goodell. And they're, they're sitting there also, you could have two of these in a line.
Well, they, they just say...
But I don't know where there's, I mean, other than Kentucky, what farmer crossing is there?
I went to Google Earth and basically, right after he told me that, we don't have a solution to the problem, they thought they did, but it turns out they didn't, because again, the resident in town was persistent in his mile markers and so on and so forth. Right after the conversation, I went to Google Earth and I looked myself, and if you looked at the Kentucky...
Kentucky?
No. Corning, well, Corning's another...
Corning's a, is a crossroad.
Yeah, it's right after that, there apparently is some type of farmer crossing there or something like that.
It's an elevated location.
The, the resident understood exactly what it was referring to and basically, at this particular point in time, again, I don't have any other solutions. The letters that I sent out going to, uh... As far as the government, all the affairs downtown, and I also sent a letter to Omaha Corporate Office, he's also been dealing with the same thing. I'm not saying totally that's the end of it, but right now, I don't have any other solutions to the problem.
You seen this crossing on Google Earth?
Yeah. You know, for this, if you went to Google Earth, they pay attention to the, uh, year, it's very dated. The one I saw, I was, somebody subscribes to it, or a new worker. That's where we're at with that. As far as the trees, the good thing is that they, they seem to be considerate, since they can't help us here. We had a request from one of the associations, my understanding is, there's like a north and a south, I don't remember what they're called. One of the associations wants to replace their fence that was falling down. Problem is that there's so much tree brush there, that they need that clipped out and put the fence up. Uh, they made an offer that they're willing to pay half, which the association says, we don't really have any funds to take down the trees, I didn't think they would. Uh, but now they said, well, maybe we can't help you here, maybe we'll help you here, so maybe I can get, we can get the trees, we can afford them, so they can get the fence back up. And we have to do further investigation, send them some photos and so on and so forth. Okay, and before we ask for an executive session, uh, on behalf of the village board and to our residents and to everybody on the board, I'd like to wish everybody a happy holidays, safe, quiet, as would like to, as Jonathan pointed out earlier. Our departments and staff has been working very, very hard for the last two or three weeks. We appreciate that, we appreciate all that everybody has done. It seems like that we couldn't catch a break for the last two weeks. And once again, I just wanna wish everybody a happy holidays, to our residents and to our staff and to our board. And, uh, I guess after the meeting, we'll have, uh, no action will be resulted, so then after the meeting, we'll say everybody next year. Is there a motion to go on the executive session?
So no.
There's a motion, they have a second.
Eric?
Yes.
Eric? Yes.
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
I'm gonna put a disclaimer, George, the game will be worth watching.